Same.
No, the only thing we ask is when, you know, it gets surveyed or marked good for us when they start construction. So we can verify where it's at. We're not encroaching on the roadway more. And again, that we see that fire or this construction that is being done. Mr. Ray is aware of how that can be done.
Are you two okay with the with firewall?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to comply.
Right.
There will be no buildings within fifteen feet of it. It is close to the property line is the issue.
So you guys are just here to get are okay because you don't have zoning in your township.
And we didn't have it surveyed. You have something to pay with that.
Greg, did you say you could move it two or three feet?
Yeah.
I'll give you another two or three feet on the property line. I mean, this is a weird property line because it's angled so bad, but.
We'll look at doing the five feet. If not, we'll just do the wall that's these be fire rated.
Mr. Chair, I was talking to Mike ahead of time here and it sounded like if it. If they were to do the 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 fire rated wall, there really is with the new with the new ordinance. Or there would be no need for a variance. Is that correct? So if they're willing to do that.
And that was kind of our hope with changing that construction ordinance. We wanted to accommodate. Of course, we talked about the ADUs, but also the many variances we see in some of these townships, you know, if we can meet the health and safety, that's all we're really concerned about. Then we can avoid a lot of these, I believe.
I can tell you guys that I was out and looked at this the other day with a with a builder. And on the south side of this property line is all of the woods. There's. And then the house on Sydney Road would be south of that yet. And there's really nothing in there, but just trees and stuff. It's just open woods. Makes sense.
So we don't need to really do anything.
Well, I guess not. Mike, what what's your take on this? Should we, I guess?
Grant the appeal or not do anything because if they meet those conditions, it's not. How do you?
That's what I think. If they meet those conditions under their new, this was just started before we changed the construction.
And they applied.
Oh.
It's just a timing thing. They applied for the variance before they approved the new.
I don't think we have any others in the works either. But there's always a transition, so.
Isn't it still, we still have to grant the variance so to build within a foot?
As long as they meet fire, the state code, no.
Really? Okay.
As long as it's a fire, one hour fire rated. If it's sprinkled, it could be right on the line.
Pete, you want a chance to vote no?
Yeah. I said my piece. I got my shot in. Well, hey, yeah, I guess if if we don't need to vote on this, you guys do what what's required and get out of here. Sorry for making you guys come up there. We really, we really enjoyed having you.
Commissioner Chair.
Yes.
They paid for an appeal.
For making a motion to.
I'd like to make a mo, yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we refund the dollars that were paid for the variance.
For.
Now we gotta come out of public hearing.
Come out of public hearing.
Okay, I'll support that, too.
Moved and supported closed public hearing. Discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Commissioner Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we refund the dollars paid for the variance.
For. It's been moved and supported to refund the payers for their variance cost. I believe it was $250. Discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, is our opioid task force got all your members here? We're a little bit early, but we'll start if you're ready.
Yeah.
Our 415 is the opioid task force committee to discuss fiscal year 2026 with the opioid marijuana funding. Potsamana, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whatever you guys want to start, we're ready.
All right. I believe you have two documents in front of you. Um, one of them was provided by Brenda, the breakdown of requested funding. And then another one provided from us, which is giving more of a detailed summation about the projects. Um, this year was definitely uh indicative of the funding stream changes that have happened. So we definitely saw more people um trying to continue the same work that's been done in the county. Or trying to expand the work that is being done to be able to meet the need that we have. We've had to be more creative as um treatment resources in the county to accommodate for the changes that have happened financially. With that in mind, and given the diligence of the controller, the variable opioid funding to allocate this year was $2,670,000. We received 14 applications in total. Out of those applications, we would recommend approval of the following for opioid funding. Vermont Com County Jail, 15,016 for supporting their continued buprenorphine program for qualified incarcerated persons. That program was rolled out this year and has been beneficial to people who have been able to bridge to care externally after the fact. Corwell Health would be a continuation as well. This year, 22,758 for continuing support of the peer recovery coach position. Motcom Care Network, new funding. Um, 75,000 for funding a full-time social work jail liaison. The program had been in place if they did not receive funding based on funding cuts that happened for them. This would be a reduction in services for high-risk people within the county. Outreach 419 through opioid funding, we would request 34,000 toward the salaries of peer recovery coaches and programming costs. Um, this is an increase from funding that we provided last year, but they've also shown that they've been very good stewards of the funding that they did receive. They significantly expanded what they were offering for people. And it seems to be generating a lot of support for the recovery community. For Sheridan Community Hospital, a continuation of funding for outpatient medication assisted treatment for people who are uninsured or underinsured within the county. 68,511 dollars. Motcom Prevention Collaborative, $1,500 for funding supplies for safe prom and vape amnesty boxes, which are programs that are facilitated by youth. For Randy's House, uh, $50,000 for ongoing support of their peer recovery coach program as well. Given the amount of funding uh that was requested and the amount of need that there is within the county, um, and in consideration of the use of marijuana funding last year to be able to help cover gaps that would not be able to be covered with the opioid money. We would request consideration of the use of marijuana funding for the following. Eighth Circuit Court Adult Recovery Court, $40,000. A renewal of financial commitment for the peer recovery coach that was funded with marijuana money last year. Mid Michigan District Health Department, 42,491 to fund two health educator roles that would have received position cuts. These two positions include prevention and education within the schools around the county. Randy's House, 15,000 for recovery housing scholarship for Motcom residents. This is an increase from what they had requested last year, but the increase in need continues. Motcom Alano Club in Greenville, 37,200 to continue to support their ongoing work of recovery support within the community. Have Mercy in Greenville, 41,545 dollars. Continued funding toward their step-up programming. And Outreach 419, 26,000 from this particular fund towards salaries of peer recovery coaches and programming costs. What questions do you have for us?
Okay, anyone have any questions for the group?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman Peterson.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. One, uh, looks like Brenda, out of this uh marijuana money, we're looking to spend 202,145 dollars, correct? How much do we have in fund balance from marijuana money?
I believe, and I looked earlier today, it was 461,000 and change that hadn't been spent.
Okay, but just if I remember right, we're paying for that MRI machine out of the marijuana money.
I already took that out.
Oh, okay, so it was 461,000 and some change on top.
After that, and after the money that community corrections gets.
Okay. So, yeah, we need to spend that down. Um. What, uh, I guess, why did you leave some off of some and some off? I I'm trying to understand the redemption farms asked for 40,000. They got zero dollars out of both. I don't know anything about redemption farms, but I just wondered.
Um, when we when we reviewed it, they didn't have a budget, uh, no work plan. And they didn't indicate how much money is going toward staffing. So.
It was what, for three months rent? It was. For a family?
Yeah. It didn't quite meet the criteria of what Exhibit B says of how the opioid money should be distributed.
Okay, and um I guess I'll I'll I I won't grinch all over this because I do believe recovery is is important. Giving any money to Corwell Health is a little rough for me because they get quite a bit. Um, and I guess lastly, Kate, didn't you have a kid last time, like a baby last time?
So, yes, last year I had a child. The year before that, I was pregnant.
Well, I know that.
Um, and then, uh, there was. Oh, where's the child?
It's too old. But it's not here, so you're gonna have to give him to him.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, cool.
I was confused because I I feel like every time I've seen you in the last two years, you've been pregnant. And so I was like, shouldn't you have that baby now?
Yeah, she brought him with her.
This will be the last pregnancy, maybe future, I mean, oh, my goodness, two two children at a commissioner's meeting is probably not ideal for next year.
So I guess um another item that we kind of have talked about in our committee meetings with this is we kind of would like. So of that 465,000 we got in February of marijuana money. Um, and you'll see we didn't give district court anything on their ask for that recover adult specialty courts. Um, that's a brain fart there for a minute. Um. And I guess the reason, one of the reasons we ruled it out is the majority of the money they were asking for, I think 30 some thousand was for drug testing, and we thought that was an exorbitant amount of money for drug testing when others, other um, applications were not requesting anywhere near that for drug testing. But to that point, um, the committee would like us to, you to commit part of the marijuana money to things like that every year. So maybe we fund, so maybe we just say we're gonna fund Circuit Courts Adult Recovery Court, we're gonna fund um, district courts, specialty courts, whatever some, we're gonna fund community corrections. Say we do like half or part or two-thirds of the marijuana money each year to a specific cause or expense. And then allow the opioid committee to spend the rest of it on proposals. Like we did last year, and then we're asking this year.
So are you gonna bring us a recommendation on what that split looks like at some point?
I can. I mean, that's, we kind of talked about it last year after after we were here and did this, but we never really, we haven't put a plan on paper yet. So that's kind of what we'd like to do is what absolutely do you want to fund with that marijuana money every year? Because once we get the CT scanner building and that all done, that's that's gonna take a chunk, but do we really envision anything else that large that we're gonna?
It always seems like we have that as our fallback position. You know, whenever somebody comes up and says, oh, we need this, this, or this, and we just have to have it, we say, oh, well, we got marijuana money. Let's just use that. Are you saying you want us to allocate it as much, as far down as we can every year to say, this is how much we want to use? And then your committee spends the rest or?
Yeah, kind of, yeah. I kind of would like to utilize so the in-house request, so we can eliminate those Circuit Court and the District Court and Community Correction, I mean, Community Correction doesn't said one. So we can eliminate them from applying for opioid money because they're already getting the marijuana money, I guess is what I'm saying. Let's let's commit our marijuana money to something. And I guess those some things, in my opinion, would be those three areas, District Court, Circuit Court, and Community Corrections.
Didn't we say when we first started getting that marijuana money that that's what the type of stuff we wanted to use it for was drug prevention and rehab stuff and everything? Think of that's what we.
Well, the first couple of years, we gave Adult Recovery Court, Circuit Court, 50,000, and then we gave the three communities that we were getting this money from 50,000, but then we decided that really wasn't a good way to spend it. Let's spend it on things that help come along.
What's your pleasure? Do you want the controller to bring us a plan? The committee desires us to do with that marijuana money, and we can look at that and vote on that in the future, or how do you want to approach that request?
How much money then approximately would we have earmarked already yearly for that money? For the stuff you wanted. So like, what would be, would that be a couple hundred thousand?
Probably.
And so right now, we, and how much, we're getting around?
We got 465, 829 in February. So I assume we're gonna get at least that again this next February.
But that's based on number of
shops.
pot shops in.
Yeah, so some closed, it would be less than that, but if more open, then it'd be more than that.
Yeah, I know Greenville's got two now, so it could be more than that. I guess I'm I'm not opposed to seeing a seeing a breakdown of it, but I do. I do like at least a little fallback, you know, hey, this popped up, let's pay for it out of marijuana money. But I think overall, if we can fund, you know, district courts and community corrections with that money. I just don't want them to say, oh, well, if we see you have 400,000, we only need 399,000 dollars. The district court, you know, just, you know, oh, well, we wanted to add a, we wanted to add a private jet to fly our recovery people in in and out.
Yeah, we've talked about it several years about putting a plan on paper, and we just haven't done it yet, so.
Sounds like it's time.
Yeah.
I think we can, we can do that and still have enough money marijuana coming in that we can still use things without synergization.
I I
I think so.
I don't disagree.
So do you want her to prepare something for the future for us?
Great idea. But I think these these lovely people in front of us want to know if we have any questions for them, and if we wanted to talk about their approving their motion for opioid settlement money.
I thought when the controller, go ahead, Mr. Johnston.
I think he was just frozen
Frozen.
by your good looks.
That's it. Let's read the word.
Tell everybody, you know. Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the fiscal year 2026 opioid and marijuana funding awards as presented.
Support. Been moved and supported discussion.
Thank you to the committee for doing this. It does take something off of our plate, for sure. Because I know I don't want to hear any more requests than we do already. At least for money.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't you be playing with those dinosaurs on the way home.
I will save them in the packaging.
Good.
And it would be lovely to stay with you guys, but I have some dinosaurs to deliver.
There you go. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Up next, we have the Ask Me President Chalice O'Green to give us a pitch for an administrative aide in the clerk's office.
Well, I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be just me doing this. Um, I talked with Chalice a little bit before, and uh she put this on the agenda. And I said I could probably handle it, so um with our our budget, we did cut uh our, one of our clerk's positions. Um, I've had a couple of discussions, one with um Judge Eggleston, one with both Chris and Stephanie, and then um one with Chalice. And um, we did cut their position, but I think um I think it is needed. Uh, Judge Eggleston said that they aren't behind yet, but they are, they're they're not drowning, but they're they're treading water. Um, talking with uh the clerk, she said that a part-time position would would help for now. Um, also, uh, you know, we all know how how much part-time positions are sought after. Um, but I think as of right now, we need to at least explore a, you know, part-time position. I don't think we need to, you know, again, I always fall back on we don't need to be robbing our constituents of services if if we can help it at all. Part-time position will still cost money, won't cost as much, you know, without having to pay benefits and everything else, and if if nothing else, we can use this as a gauge if if we come to budget time next year and Chris says, yep, you know, a part-time position is great. That's all we need. Flexible for everybody and it works great. If not, then, you know, we look at full time and and go from there, but um, just in the just in the uh conversations that I've had, I I I talked. And this isn't just a, hey, you know, we we just kind of need this, kind of not. I think it's a definite need, but I said I would, I would bring it up and see what everybody thought and go from there.
Commissioner Johnston.
Do we have a a cost of what, a full-time aide would pass us roughly?
Full-time, you said?
Yeah, full-time.
Yeah, I can get you that here in a minute.
And we do have marijuana money. I'm just kidding. Chris, did you, while she's looking that up, did you want to talk to this at all or?
No, I appreciate the fact that it's being looked at again. I appreciate the fact that Chalice was a former employee of clerk's office and knows how busy it is.
Yeah.
Appreciate the fact that you
Yeah.
and were willing to discuss it.
And and this, this wasn't, this, this was Chalice reaching out to me and 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 saying she is very familiar with the clerk's office and said, you know, the girls are just drowning and and clerk included. Um, you know, obviously, our clerk is has had a rough couple of months and, you know, we all know how that goes. And so I I think if if nothing else, we need to at least get somebody in there to start, start climbing out of the hole or digging ourselves out of the hole. And and again, I think we owe it to our constituents to uh to provide the best service we can, especially if we have the money for it.
Does it need to be a full-time position? I mean, would that be? Would would that be better?
Yes, but I'm willing to take whatever I can get at this point. We we were hit really, really hard with this lean situation. When central dispatch no longer would enter any of our lean, and then district court was going to take it. And then that didn't work out, so we got stuck taking it. And it was just it's been way more than anyone ever anticipated it would be.
Didn't Tom George come back to do some lean stuff?
No, he's doing body. Not for us, he's not. So, um, a full-time employee that takes two-person coverage. Um. This particular one I'm looking at is at the top of the scale or close to it, $70,000.
What would be the entry? Probably 50 or 60, somewhere in there.
I think he is doing some stuff, but I think it's specifically the sheriff's office.
That's just wages too, right?
No, she said, she said with two-person insurance.
Okay.
With two-person insurance, 64, 64.
At the bottom of the scale? And then a part-time would be 30 something, maybe 20 something?
46 is the, or 40,000 is the wage only for that full-time, so. Yeah, part-time would be 25,000 maybe.
No.
Depending on the number of hours.
The part-time would cost 25,000? With benefits?
Yeah, they don't get much for benefits.
25 for part-time, 64 for full-time.
At the bottom.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Well, I would uh, I would move that the part-time position be reinstated in the clerk's office effective January 1.
It's been moved and supported to reinstate a part-time person in the county clerk's office to begin January 1.
And I would like to amend my motion to say that the clerk can post now if she so chooses.
Support. She can anyway, right? I don't think we need it.
Well, hey.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Chair, my my only, I mean, I I obviously part-time is better than nothing, but I, is there? What would be the metric that would decide? Uh, how will we know if a part-time isn't enough, if we need a full-time?
I think if by January 1, our clerk comes to us at the organization meeting and says, I haven't been able to hire, no one's applied. Then we reevaluate that and say, okay, let's bump it up a little bit. I I think she's treading water now. I don't think there's any any danger of sinking.
Yeah.
You know, she does a good job, so it is what it is, but I think this is our first step towards that, and if it doesn't work, doesn't work. I mean, Rochelle will know if we're getting any
Yeah.
applicants and we can go from there. You want to say something?
I'm I'm wondering how many hours? Under 30?
Yeah, I would say not to exceed 29. That's, I think that's the definition of part-time. But uh, in a very heated debate earlier, I think there is times where 30 hours is acceptable, but it can't be more than a couple of weeks in a row or something like that, so.
Is that what you meant, or do you mean at what point will we, what metric will be used to know if that was enough?
Yeah, I was, I was wanting to know what is
Oh, I see.
From a workload standpoint, if we're not, if if the person that is not getting the job done or not able to complete the tasks that are needed, at what point do they need more hours? How do we know?
That's, I think that's where we we lean on our elected official, you know.
That's my point. They've been a year and a half with no one. 30 more hours has got to be a hell.
It's got to be, this is improvement, okay?
And then, didn't we post for this job three times?
I only posted for this position one time.
One time.
So I know, I know a big sticking point is is billing. Uh, you know, getting
Process of getting that.
Okay, well, I think that's some some sticking point is can we, can we make sure that we're, we're doing that with this part-time?
Yep.
That's a definite metric for me. Is we're gonna have this hours, and then that's what I'm gonna look at to know whether that's successful or not.
And I know that there was a question regarding reducing certified copy fees. And we only have one month to go on, right? But we're only down $400 over one month, so, and that's gonna vary, you know, with school and all of that, but we're not taking a huge loss there.
Okay.
True. Forgive me for my ignorance, but what makes this position so hard to fill? I'm just, is it just?
It's just hard to fill part-time positions.
Yeah, I wasn't saying that this position itself is hard to fill. I think, I think Chris could could fill it. It's just not a lot of people are looking for part-time work right now.
Well, and her other option is she's got someone out there that doesn't want to work full-time right now. Well, and her other option is she's got someone out there that doesn't want to work full-time right now. So that person could slide into this part-time and then that allows her to hire a full-time one. That would be one option.
You expect her to fill it, you think?
I hope to.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Motion carried.
Thanks, everybody.
Up next is our four forty uh with the Drain Commissioner to discuss a dam repair slash replacement on Lake Stanton. Welcome.
Welcome. Thanks for having me back. I thought I wore you guys out last time, but I guess not.
I don't think you're gonna be back in the next meeting.
Right.
I warned.
So easy, first time, why not, huh?
That's right. When it's right, it's right. Did you guys all have, um, we had it in a, we had it in a PowerPoint, but we included some PDFs in there. So does anyone have? And I brought some extras in case anyone didn't wanna follow along, so.
I think you've all got it.
Okay. I guess um, I'll, this is Noah who is Spicer Group. They're the engineering firm that takes care of the um, every three years, we have to do inspections on the various state, or the various certified structures that were required to inspect. So I'll let him kinda take it over and I'll just jump in from there.
So like Todd said, my name's Noah. I'm with Spicer Group. Um, we completed the inspection of all the lake levels um under the county jurisdiction in late summer, uh early fall this year. Um, and so in the packet, there are some photos from our inspection of the Lake Stanton Dam. Um, the first photo, you can see the end of the, the box culvert under the road. This used to have concrete wing walls on both sides. Those have cracked and then fallen into the water, so those are no longer there. And due to this, um, you can see top right, the road is starting to wash out. And the road commission has a temporary fix. Um, they're hoping for a, a project so that they can have a more permanent fix. Um, and they've been holding off on a more permanent fix because this project was in discussion. The next photo.
Sorry, is this right on Stanton Row?
Um, the next photo is um, kinda that same washout area, but from the road. Um, you can see the asphalt patch. Um, and you can also see the guardrail is starting to lean. It's no longer standing straight. So you can just tell the soils are moving and that slope isn't stable. The next photo is just a closer, a closer up photo of that same washout with the PVC, trying to make sure the water gets off the road and try to avoid the water running directly on the slope to try to keep it as stable as possible. Um, the next photo is inside um that, that box culvert under the road. There's a chunk of concrete missing. This is the, the worst one, but there's a few chunks of concrete missing from that box culvert. Um, and then there's just the native earth behind it. Um, and so as water gets in there, it can erode that dirt and then that can cause sinkholes in the road. Um, so it's not ideal when you have holes in your pipe. And then in this dam, see, there's a, a concrete box culvert. And then as you work upstream, that tr- transitions into a corrugated metal pipe, which you can see at the edge of this picture. And the next photo is looking up that metal pipe. Um, originally in nineteen seventy, when this dam was built, uh this was a round pipe, but now um it is beginning to become squashed. Um, it used to be a sixty-six inch diameter pipe. Now it only spans fifty-eight inches uh vertically. So it's squished eight inches over the course of its lifespan. And typically, metal pipes have an anticipated lifespan of about fifty years and we're at fifty-five years with this metal pipe. So definitely at the, the tail end of its lifespan. Um, and then that next photo, you can begin to see there's um, obviously the, the metal pipe is rusted and it's hard to tell in this photo, but there are um what we call weep holes, so that's um holes where the type of pipe is rusted through and water is beginning to seep into that pipe. Um, so that can cause issues if that ever were to bring soil into the pipe. And then again, it can create sinkholes in the embankment and just cause further and further issues. Then this last slide, just kind of um is a brief overview of the lake level project process. Um, I know Todd um spoke that a couple of meetings ago, you guys had a, another presentation about lake level process. So you're somewhat familiar. But in order to kickstart this process, there needs to be a resolution from you all to allow Todd to spend more than ten thousand dollars to do a study and design of a fix for this dam.
Let me jump in real quick. Part of the other thing that happens is when we do these inspections every three years, we're required to send our findings over to the state of Michigan. Um, they then rate the various structures. We have been watching this for, this has gotta be about, well, Spicer's probably done this fifteen years. This is probably the fifth time that they've inspected this. We've been nearing um a poor rating for a few different cycles now. This last bit of stuff, as it's affected the roadway surface and stuff, has finally triggered this to be classified as a poor rating now. So when we submitted our findings to Eagle, they ensuingly, within a few weeks, sent back and said, hey, we, we've received your stuff from your engineering firm. We've noticed that the thing is now classified poor. They give a list of uh, you know, different things that they would like us to work on. But ultimately, I'm the vessel that this goes through, just like the other one. Um, you're the owner of the infrastructure, therefore you're the one who initiates the resolution for us to expend greater than ten thousand dollars to maintain the infrastructure. So now this has kinda been, you know, brought to Eagle. Eagle has kicked it back and said, hey, now it's on our radar. We know that something needs to be done. Something needs to be taken care of here. Um, they will be looking for some sort of a corrective action plan on how we go about handling this over the coming months, years, so to speak. Um, part of the reason that we wanna do something about this now is obviously, one, we have a problem, but we have it before. It's an emergency. Two, we also have the road commission in our corner because they've been watching this road slowly fail. They're interested in partnering together to try to take care of some of this. Had this not been at that convenient time, um, in a good working relationship, the overall cost would be all on the lake level by itself. So good timing that we have that to go as well. It also helps that we have, we, we bid, we back up, we did have um a small informational meeting maybe a month or so ago, maybe a little more than a month ago, where we did have presidents from the Stanton Association, road commission, um, the road commission's engineering staff. We actually had Nate come to that just with his experience at the road commission and his engineering background. We felt like it'd be a good fit, thinking that it would transition here to today's meeting. Uh, how dare he get married? You know, I don't understand this stuff. So um, yeah, I mean, we can shelf this and I can come back when he's back, if that's easier. But uh, all jokes aside, um, we, we've tried to be as proactive as possible to be able to get the information out there before we come here.
So we grant you the ability to spend more than ten grand and we get that recovered, or we're not on the hook for that?
Yeah, you're not on the hook for that at all. It, this is much like the same thing. Um, the resolution allows me to start the process to say, all right, what is the problem? Um, what's going on with the infrastructure? What is the, what is the needs here? Uh, what does a reasonable project look like? Um, very preliminary stuff then gets in front of Eagle. You have to get an approval for a project. The permitting for that. We're a long way from having something to design and bid and having costs, but.
Just roughly knowing what you know and knowing what no one knows, how mu- how big a project is this gonna be?
It's hard to say, but I will tell you that this particular piece of infrastructure is on the lower side of what dam infrastructure costs. Um, we could probably repair this for relatively, I say inexpensive, you know, maybe south of a couple hundred thousand dollars. But you'd be putting in a steel pipe, something that only has a fifty-year lifespan. Most of these are not being built with that anymore. They're being built with some sort of a box culvert or concrete cache. You're looking to get something that's got upwards of a hundred years life expectancy. That will probably be in the bulk of your expense here is gonna be in road closure, road rebuilding, construction, that kinda stuff. The materials that you put in, the trench will be the smaller aspects of it. Um, so I think we'll be looking to spend a little more than that, but you know, i- it's really hard for me to say because I can sit here and say, well, I'd really like to do it for a half a million dollars, but I have no idea what they're gonna find. I have no idea what Eagle's gonna allow. Something else that plays a role in this is Eagle has recently updated. What is the measurements there?
Uh, yeah, they uh provide flow rates for the required capacity um for the storm event that the dam can pass. And they've recently updated their methodology of doing that. And we've seen some increases um in capacity of forty or fifty percent. So it's um adding a third uh to the size that the structure would need to be.
Cause in essence, what they're looking for is what can this body of water store? You know, prior to the Midland dam failures, we had a rate. If this was on a water body of this, if this was, we need to be able to hold a two-hundred-year rain event while it releases at a slower rate, you maybe could get by. But with the evolution of the weather patterns and in lieu of this floodings over there, they're being much more um, and they're readjusting, calculating for what the next forty years worth of weather events looks like. So we don't really know what that measurement is yet. We might find out that we don't even physically have enough free board from the top of the lake level to maybe the first impacted homes to be able to put in the same size pipe that's there. We may have to increase it dramatically to be able to offer that um rapid uh.
So do you have to get buy-in from the, from the drainage or not the drainage district?
I do not, no. No, and that's, that's why I really wanna, I wanna understa- I want you to understand the difference. Before, when we came here with Cowden Lake, this is a, people want this, right? They come, they brought their money, they brought their support. People want this. This is, this needs to be done. Infrastructure needs to be maintained. Whether the people are in favor of paying for it or not, that's really, that's kinda the sticky point in there. It, you know, you've got a, a structure that was put in in nineteen seventy. You have a man-made lake. You have all of these homes and a piece of body of water that depends on it. It only holds about six or seven foot of water on there, but take it out, I'll guarantee it'll become instantly pretty, pretty important to everybody.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
So when we call this the dam and just reading through here, there's a, a legal lake level that has to be maintained on Lake Stanton. Uh, there's no talk about Dickerson Lake. If, if I understand it right, does Lake Stanton feed Dickerson Lake?
It does.
So when you call this a dam, is it gonna be a culvert? Is, or is it going to be a dam that will restrict or?
It's already a dam. The road itself is what makes the dam. This, this vertical riser pipe is what makes the impoundment of water. Prior to nineteen seventy, there was obviously no lake. It was just a county drain that discharged the one-twelve all the way into Dickerson Lake. There was nothing but just woods and swampy ground on the north side of the road. And that, that existing box culvert that you can see was the bridge. So when they put this dam in, they plugged the elliptical pipe, the concrete pipe, um, the corrugated pipe into the side of it. They cemented that off and that's how they released the water. So that piece of infrastructure that he showed where it's falling has been there much longer than the fifty-five years of the life expectancy. That's been there since five-twenty-two was built, you know, a hundred years ago, whenever the last time they put that in.
So I guess as far as the lake level for Lake Stanton, that has to be maintained, but Dickerson Lake doesn't have any court order for a, a lake level?
They don't at the moment, but I wouldn't be surprised.
Well, I bet you after this they will. But I guess on the, on the other side of that, if we have to increase the flow by fifty percent or whatever, whatever Noah was saying, is that gonna cause too much water to get into? I, I guess, how are we gonna?
There's a trickle-down effect. No pun intended, but you're right.
How are we gonna maintain a lake level if we have to increase the outlet? I mean, it's.
And what's the downstream impact, right? Yeah, and all that is part of what that feasibility study and what did engineering, um, you know, right now, they can come up.
So we don't know the answer to that.
We don't know the answer to that. But that will be looked at because if they say, hey, this is a seventy-inch culvert that's there now and it now needs to be a eight-foot box culvert and we have to release X amount of water. And you go over there and say, well, Hillman Road's got a thirty-six-inch culvert on the road, it'll never handle it. Something will have to be looked at down there, too.
So and, and, and my final question is, you say the people all around this, even around the lakes, around Lake Stanton, around this culvert, they have no say in any of this. They have to pay for it and that's it, right?
I don't mean to be so brash, but yes. I mean, it's not that they don't have any say, but the infrastructure was built to be able to construct the lake. All of the property around there is in an association that was put together in the assessment role all at the very beginning of time when this was created. So this assessment role has been there since nineteen seventy. We assess it about every two to three years. We collect a thousand bucks for covering the cost of the, of the inspections, a little mowing, very basic stuff. It probably costs seven, ten, twelve bucks a parcel, pretty tiny. So this role has been being used. It's obviously never had to do a actual project before.
So I guess my only, my only hang-up to this is the same as Cowden Lake. You come in here, you say, I need ten thousand dollars. I need you to approve it today. You don't need to listen to them. I can do what I want. What if we approve this today, this all craps out? We, we have a flooded Dickerson Lake. Lake Stanton's too low. The residents are upset. They're paying for this. Then what do we do? They're not gonna come beating your door down. They're gonna come in here and beat us up for that. I mean, y- you say there's nothing they can do. If we say no to this, to let you spend over ten thousand dollars, that, that might not stop it, but it would hinder it.
You're right. Well, I guess, let's look at the far extreme of that. Say no to it and let the spring have a huge rain event and have the road wash out and you lose the entire lake.
Right, but you, you just said yourself, this isn't gonna be repaired within the next couple of years.
No, but I'm using a plane.
Right, hypotheticals are hypotheticals. I get it. But I'm just saying, it just seems like, yet again, you're, you're in here saying, we've gotta have this. Right now, we've gotta get this ball rolling and I don't know what anybody that lives around Lake Stanton or people in my district that live around Dickerson Lake have to say about it.
People in Dickerson Lake aren't in the district. It doesn't involve them. The district is from the dam upstream. It's really just all of the properties that are on Lake Stanton and inside of the association that are part of the assessment.
It doesn't, okay. It doesn't involve them, but it, the water flow, so.
No, you're right. Yeah, I mean, the conversations have been had at Dickerson Lake meetings and things like that. So uh, they've, oh, everybody since the Midland dam failures has been concerned about a visible dam that they can see and trying to understand what is the potential impacts for us. The unfortunate thing is we are, a lot of the stuff that we do is very reactive. Um, so in this situation, we have something that says, hey, we've noticed some failing infrastructure. We don't have to do anything, uh, but we're at a point where somebody has said, hey, the structure that there needs to have something done to it. And I don't, uh, this isn't anything that I do on my own. Without a resolution to exceed the ten thousand dollars, I, I don't do anything.
Well, when you say somebody has said something about it, is it Spicer that said something about it or a concerned resident?
No, no, when Spicer completes the reviews that's required by us to do every three years, and then they file it with the state of Michigan, the state of Michigan says, hey, now we know that your dam is rated as poor infrastructure.
Okay.
So I can't tell you how big the teeth are. I mean, I don't have any experience saying, well, let's wait, let's wait six months, let's wait two years. I, I don't know what to tell you.
Mr. Chair? One day, I'd like to know, I mean, I realize it's a drain and we have to maintain the culvert under the road and stuff, but how did the county get involved in creating a dam? And using county funds to create a private lake that's not accessible to anybody in the county except the property owners? I don't understand how you use everybody's money to create a private area for.
You don't really use everybody's money. You mean, how do you use everyone's money right now?
Yeah.
Well, you don't. You, you authorize me to, to spend greater than that, but you have to approve the assessment role. And I turn around and I spread that money against that district that are just those lakefront landowners. So when that money gets repaid, it's not paid by everyone in the county. It's paid by just those residents of that assessment role.
But we pay to ensure that dam.
You do.
It's on our insurance. That's why I said, how do we own something to create a private lake for somebody that nobody else can use? That's why I don't understand. I.
That's, yeah, it's part of how it works.
That baffles me. I mean, we are spending county money somewhere along the line. I mean.
Oh, I, I don't disagree, yes.
That nobody else can use it except for the actual property owners there. There's no public access. I can't go over there and fish it anytime I want or anything. And I, I just, it baffles me how we use county money to create a private place for somebody.
I think if you're gonna weasel, if you're gonna go down the rabbit hole so far as to talk about insurances, maybe there's places where counties assess the cost of the insurance, you know, the emergency medical stuff or the emergency management stuff. Maybe they assess that back. I, I don't know that. We've not had enough of this for me to have that kind of expertise in it. But the vast majority of this stuff um is, is paid for by the residents in the assessment district. Even, you know, we had a, we had an issue where we ended up using the county's um insurance coverage here on a different lake in the county. They had a, they had a transformer blow and it blew a pump up to the tune of about, I think it was around forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars. The county's insurance stepped up and covered that cost, but the initially, we used the money from the, from the assessment role to be able to take care of that because they needed their pump system back up and running. from the, from the assessment role to be able to take care of that because they needed their pump system back up and running. Fortunately, we were able to collect on that stuff, and so the insurance company was able to reimburse that. Otherwise, the assessment role was responsible for it.
Do you know how many homes are on the assessment role?
We just added up two hundred.
It's like two hundred twenty-six.
Two twenty-six, yeah. Some are fr- front lot and back lot, but that's, I think that's everybody that's in the association rate at the moment.
So even back lot, people would have to pay for this?
It's only people with immediate or deeded access.
They have deeded access, that's how the entire Lake Stanton Association was put together. And, and that, all those association dues are actually, they're mandatory in this association. It's kind of a backward system because they are mandatory responsible for collecting them, but there isn't a mechanism like we have for property taxes with foreclosure. So if you choose to not send your association dues in, it just shows as a lien against your property, and if you live there for twenty years, when you sell it, then the association collects for twenty years for the association dues. So they have a guaranteed way to get it, but you got to turn the properties over all the time, and that doesn't help them with really being able to maintain weed programs or bolt launches or any sort of infrastructure because they can't guarantee to collect the revenue. That's a different story altogether, but.
How many years normally would, on something like this, would we, would we give the homeowner to pay it off?
We usually, usually, obviously, I, I do the best I can to work with everyone. You know, five years, ten years, those are pretty realistic. If you got into a project that was multi-millions of dollars, yeah, you could do twenty, thirty years. The big difference is you start getting into the longer term, you start getting into more of the bonding and stuff, and, you know, there's additional costs with that, so you got to be realistic, you know. If, if two hundred bucks a year is a reasonable dollar amount, and that takes ten years to pay it, would it be easier to do it in five years for five hundred, you know what I mean? Where's that tipping scale? And that's, that's the crappy part about my job.
I was just doing, I mean, three hundred thousand, two hundred twenty-six, I think, was around, I don't know.
We ran the math real quick, what was, I said a half a million dollars, and two twenty-six was like two hundred and twenty-one dollars or something.
Spread over twenty years.
No, spread over ten years, I ran. And then you also had, you got to remember, you're going to get some mon-, you're going to get some buy-in from the road commission here. You know, you're going to have, th- they're obviously looking to do something, they're going to do something. They have money to be able to maintain and upkeep the road. If this didn't coincide with their schedule or they weren't patient and willing to wait, we, they could just say, well, go ahead, do what you want to do, our road's fine. You know, if it wasn't affecting that, then we would be expected to pay for that as well.
At some point, this has to be done, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, just whether we do it now, five years, or whether it fails, and then we've got it. I mean, so I, I guess I don't really see a way around it, I suppose we can put it off, but at some point, we have to do it.
And really, that's why I'm here, you're right, to Adam's point, we don't have to do it this minute. I'm just looking at saying, we've been watching this, we know we have a problem, we can visibly see the problem. We have a road commission that is in favor of doing something right now, so that means their checkbook is open and willing to be, you know, collaborative on it. We filed paperwork with the state, they're asking us what it's going to do. You know, if somebody has a good reason why, why to push it down the road, that's up to you guys to decide. Again, I'm just the vehicle that this operates through.
I, I want to be clear, I don't think I, I, I'm not trying to push it down the road. I just hate shoving assessments down taxpayers' throats. That's all it is. I mean, I understand this has, has to be done, it is what it is, but I just hate saying you've got to pay more taxes for something that.
It's an unexpected expense for families that probably aren't prepared and some can't afford it.
Right. And the hard part is, is it is unexpected, but at the same time, when you buy on a lake, this isn't the first time this tax rule, so we all get a choice to choose where we choose to live. You want to live on the lake, extra expenses come with it. You want to live on a private lake, this piece of infrastructure is maintained like that. Take a drive over to the east side of the county or the east side of the state and go look at Midland. These people who bought lake houses around there ten years ago probably didn't expect that they'd spend the last five years with no lake, and now the cost to put the lake back is, you know, two hundred and fifty-some million dollars paid by them. I bet they, you know, it's just, it's, this is just the evolution of where we're at, that we build infrastructure without any maintain, without any plan of how to collect revenue and maintain these things.
I get the gloom and doom, but I don't, I think if the dam fails in Lake Stanton, I don't think it's going to wipe out city blocks.
No, I, I get it, yeah, it's far from what that one is. It's a, it's not the, it doesn't have the same impact there, but, you know, soil, it migrates in a Dickerson Lake, those residents are equally concerned about that, the erosion that happens in there. We get asked to do E. coli testing all the time because everyone's always concerned about what's coming into the water. So those residents are equally concerned about what's happening on Lake Stanton as well.
I'm sure, because they don't have to foot the bill if something changes. I'd be just as concerned, I'd want to change tomorrow.
Which pleasure have a sample resolution before us?
I will make a motion to accept the sample resolution.
I'll support.
What number will it be?
Number correct. It's been moved and supported to adopt resolution two zero two five dash one four, resolution to address Lake Stanton dam. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Just one, Chris, were you?
He was opposed to.
Now, let's do a roll call.
Johnston.
No.
Mahar.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Carr.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, we will, we'll start the slow, tedious process of collecting information and we'll keep you in the loop.
All right.
Thank you.
Next is tonight's correspondence, Vice Chairman Peterson, please.
Okay. First up is on page, Jesus, not even telling me, twenty-nine of your packet, Board of Commissioners Committee Appointments for 2026. Brenda would just like to start having a conversation about appointments. If you look on, I believe, page twenty.
Thirty.
What?
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah. That's what is currently going on, I don't know what the highlights are for.
Well, the highlights are ones that have been offered up for someone else to take. I did highlight the Board of Health because Matt has expressed a desire to maybe come off that. Are you still on that?
No, I, I, I'm fine with it.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll scratch that.
Liz, do you believe what you're hearing right now? Yeah, he's saying no because you're here is what, oh, no, I never said that.
So it's just the Veterans Advisory Board then and Area Agency?
When Commissioner Johnson was appointed, I know there was talk that the Veterans Advisory Board might be a good fit.
Yeah, I thought we'd already pointed to that. Did not.
So is that, is that something, Commissioner Mahar, you're willing to give up? And furthermore, is Commissioner Johnson willing to take it?
I think so. Yeah, absolutely.
How about Area Agency?
Well, Nate's not here.
He talked about wanting to give that up because he doesn't.
It's in Grand Rapids.
On board, on board Mondays, I'm there in the morning for a little while. I can easily grab that on my way home before our board meeting.
Perfect.
So everybody else is set then, so we'll just put Jack on those two and leave Matt on the Board of Health, and then this list can come back to the organizational meeting and be good.
Yep.
All right.
Well, then, for the lake boards, Commissioner Johnson so, is so willing to help, he can take all of my lake boards if he wants.
So I don't want Dickerson Lake because?
I don't know, I think you might, I think you might, might be hearing some guff.
Just look at those and make sure those are correct. I feel like we've had to make tweaks every year to that lake board list.
So we don't need a motion on that, we'll cover that at organizational meeting on January second, which is a Friday.
Which is a Friday at nine o'clock in the morning.
Barf.
All right, so probably just have to place that on file, correct, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, I would move to place the committee appointments for 2026 on file.
For, been voted supported discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next up on page thirty-two is the grant for community corrections. It is just an agreement, so I believe we just need to approve and allow for the appropriate signatures.
Correct.
If nobody has any, everything all right?
Yes.
Okay. If nobody has any questions or comments, I would move to approve and allow for the appropriate signatures for the grant that is between Montcom County and the Office of Community Corrections.
It's been moved and supported discussion.
That does represent an increase, because normal grant is about ninety-seven thousand and change, so he did get an increase.
Do we know what that increase is going to go for?
Probably, yeah, the program.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next up is, the Treasurer's Office is asking for an administrative aide to hire in and start on the eighth of December to get training before Vicki leaves on the thirty-first. The way I understand this, it is someone that was in the Treasurer's Office prior to being in the clerk's office, if I'm not mistaken?
Years ago.
Years ago.
Like twenty-five years ago.
Right. So does anybody have anything on this? Joanne, did you want, did you want to speak to this at all, or you don't have to come up here? What's that? Right?
It's pretty consistent with how we've dealt with other requests for similar training, hirings.
With this much, do we, don't we normally just do two, two weeks?
We've had them this long before in recent times.
If I can say something?
Sure.
I would prefer that I'd be able to keep my employee until the nineteenth instead of December fifth. And this, this particular employee did use to work in the Treasurer's Office, she worked for the city of Mount Pleasant in the Treasurer's Office.
Did the employee, will the employee give you two weeks?
She gave me two weeks, her, her start date in the Treasurer's Office was December eighth. I would, I've already posted her position. This is, this is going to hurt us pretty bad.
But that's not really our, I mean.
No, I, I got it.
We can't make her stay, I don't think.
Yeah, stays or leaves, if she gave you the two weeks and that complies with it, we can't change it.
All right.
Does anybody have anything else? There's no proposed motion here. But given that the employee is going to be done on the eighth anyway, and I don't think there's any way for us to change that, unfortunately, I would move to allow the Treasurer's Office to have the new administrative aide start on the eighth of December to allow for appropriate training.
Or it's been moved and supported to allow the new hire in the Treasurer's Office to start on the eighth of December to allow for appropriate training discussion. Go ahead, Colonel.
I understand, Chairman, I understand your position where we have some cannot stop her from leaving the Treasurer's or the clerk's office, but we also don't have to approve the, this motion, which would probably keep her at the clerk's office, and so we do have some control over that. I guess, the only thing I would, and I don't think anybody here is going to answer this, maybe Brenda, who is going to be in the worst position, I guess? And could this employee potentially hit the ground running because she has experience? And so I feel like we may be taking from the clerk's office, who was in a, a really bad spot already in hurting her office significantly, to help out the Treasurer's Office with an employee that may be able to hit the ground running in that need except a time. So I guess I just wondered if that's.
I still don't think it's our, this gal gave you two weeks notice, and on the eighth of December, she's available.
She's done.
She's starting in the Treasurer's Office.
So how do, she's going to be done in the clerk's office on the eighth, whether we let the Treasurer hire on the eighth or not, right?
I, I guess I didn't understand that.
She would stay, I mean.
Why did she pick the eighth if she wants to stay?
Joanne did.
Uh, that's the part I don't want to get into, I guess, whether who picked it or whatever else. Do we want to allow Joanne to hire this person early like it's been done regularly with this board? Or do we want to hold her hostage or babysit her to stay in the clerk's office? We're not, that's the part I'm just not interested in, but we certainly can.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just, I think there's more to this. And I, I guess I wouldn't look at it as holding hostage if she's getting still a couple of weeks of training.
It'd be like a week, i- if she, if she decided, you know, again, I, I, I understand where Commissioner Carr's from, coming from, and I understand where Commissioner Mahar's coming from. Only problem is, if she said, I'm done on the eighth, and we said, well, you can't get hired in until the week after, she could just take a week off, you know, she doesn't, we can't force her to do anything, that's.
I understand.
Unfortunately, that's it. If she was, if she was that upset, she could be in here saying, oh, no, if we don't do it, oh.
I feel like, and I agree with all that, but I feel like the way we're doing it is to the, is helping one office to the detriment of another. That, that's my, my problem.
We can change that.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with waiting till the fifteenth. I'm going to go into, in December, January second is my last day. And two of the staff in my office already have vacation on the calendar, you know, it's the holidays. So it's basically just me. And I do feel that there are things that have changed from the woman. Because she's also very capable of, if she's willing to wait till the fifteenth instead of the eighth, I don't have a problem with that, other than the week of Christmas and New Year's. I don't think we're off four days, but I have vacation for the two weeks of other people in the office. So it's kind of where I was coming from.
So training will be difficult those weeks?
It will, yeah, be a little more. The other thing is, is I don't know at what point you're going to appoint a new treasurer. If that's going to be an issue or not, as far as meeting that person's training. I want to do what's best for the county, and I don't want to walk and say sayonara, you know?
Does the fifteenth help you to meet what you think you need to get done, is, is there a?
Well, because there's, the people are not on vacation that week. So if I can get her in on the fifteenth, I can be, go, be, go stay the next two weeks.
Chris, would that help you?
It would help me, but we'll get by no matter what, so.
If Laura is willing to do it, I don't mind asking her and see if she can change her date to the fifteenth. I don't have a problem with that.
How do you move on that, though?
Just let her go.
We can, our motion can be to allow the clerk to hire her on the fifteenth to allow for training.
You said the clerk, you meant the treasurer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Um, I mean, yeah, we could, we could do that, and I, I could amend my motion. Again, I just fall back on, will, will they do it? You know, we, we can, we can say we can hire her on any day, we just got to make sure that.
Laura's on board, yeah, maybe she wants to take the week off to go Christmas shopping.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
So what day, so what day is it that you want to allow the treasurer to hire her for training? Current motion is the eighth.
I.
Just leave it the.
Okay, clerk says leave it the eighth. I will plow through with that then.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
All right, next up is Veterans Affairs Emergency Food Cards. Trevor, you don't have to come up if you don't want to. I know you get a little uh, little nerved up up here. You're, you're more than welcome to come up here if you want, but I.
Good right now, though.
Yeah, okay, I just.
You long to back up, though, when you say that.
No, I know.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, evening.
Okay, so this isn't anything different than what we've done the last five years. Um, our food voucher program to help veterans um with food insecurities. We uh, in the past, we've used the state grant uh from the Michigan Veteran Affairs Agency. Uh, the grant has gotten to be quite tedious to deal with, and uh the last year and a half, uh, the states kinda changed the rules in the middle of the game because they had to. Um, but they're also restricting a lot of what they're allowing us to purchase with the grant funding. So just like we uh have bought vehicles in the past with the grant funding, apparently there were counties uh using the grant yearly by new vehicles. They, so they put a stop to that. So we just decided that I just build the emergency relief uh funding up to accommodate the, the food vouchers. Uh, so that's already been built into my uh emergency relief fund for this year.
You've got the money allocated, you're just asking permission to follow through with it?
For the purchase, correct.
How many years, I know a few years ago I asked you maybe to consider Lepink's as well, being they had three stores in the county. How many years have we been doing it with both Meyer and Lepink? Do you know?
Uh, we started with Lepink's two years ago.
Okay.
And those were, the first set were donated from the American Legion here in Stanton, post four fifty-two. And then uh we had another donation come in for Lepink's cards. So I'm gonna speak with Lepink's to see what they're willing, amounts they're willing to do uh to supplement. Maybe if it's somebody that doesn't have the transportation to get to Greenville to go to Myers.
Okay.
Uh, that could be utilized uh closer, uh whether it's like you here at Stanton or Howard City.
Good.
Trevor, and I'm, and I'm sure you have a, a good handle on this, but how do you, how do you select who gets the, the, one of the hundred food cards?
By necessity, and it's hard to tell. I mean, you can usually, you can see when somebody's really struggling.
Right.
Generally, we would, we would use this in conjunction with our emergency relief fund. So if somebody came in, they behind on electricity and their house payments, so to speak. And a one-time emergency relief could get them into a much better spot. That's where we would also ask if a food card would be appropriate.
Okay. So it's not just something for the holidays or anything like that, it's just in, in extreme cases?
Yeah, we, we, we try to let our veterans know, hey, if you don't really need this.
Right.
Should you have it?
Right.
And most of them will say, oh, well, I just thought you were giving them away.
Mm-hmm.
Well, uh, they're for emergency, so.
Yeah. And you usually get, get rid of them every year?
And we just finished up, uh, we had five cards this year that didn't go out by uh September thirtieth. So there's five cards that I won't get reimbursed through the state grant that we got in twenty twenty-five. And uh we didn't apply for the twenty twenty-six grant because there's nothing we really need to get it for. And it's just a bunch of, the state sends us money, and then I have to write Brenda, and we have to do an EFT back to the state, and it's, it's a pain.
Trevor, there's nothing in that grant that we can use to fund any portion of what we do here? I think, I, I did a little research, there's four things now that they're saying that grant covers, like personnel costs, IT costs, and what were the other two?
Uh, there was the provision for, uh, they just brought back in, so if you wanted to hold an event or uh a meal for veterans, that sort of thing, you could add that into the grant, supplement that. Um, and I don't, I don't remember what the other one was. I kinda fell off the radar with the, with all the grant. Usually I'd put my intent to file in, and then I would get all the emails that correspond with. Okay, here's what the provision is for the twenty twenty-six grant, here's where your limitations are, so on and so forth. Since I didn't have put the intent to file in, I haven't gotten any of those emails, so.
And that's like right around fifty grand, where?
Uh, it's a fifty thousand dollar initial grant, and then uh per capita veterans give you what you would get on top of that. And this is where we ran into problems last year, where the state overshot by three and a half million dollars. So remember, this isn't, this is a reimbursement program, this isn't. So counties went out and spent a bunch of money, and then the state said, oh, our bad. And it caused big uproar, so we just uh just kinda stepped back from it, where our budget does fairly well, so.
Okay.
We don't, I, and I, and there is a provision, I know there's provision in the grant that says that, that I can't um I can't move money from what millage dollars would pay for and, and supplement that from the state grant. So.
Well, it sounds like Commissioner Johnson is already ready for the Veterans Affairs Board.
Commissioner Maher was, wanted to abandon the, the Veterans Committee.
Gonna be taking over, in fact, I already communicated with Trevor about that.
Please don't print that. I'm not one of the end of the veterans, I love the veterans.
I love the veterans. I, I love the veterans the most, I don't know what he's talking about.
So if, if I could do the honors, I would like to go ahead and entertain uh the motion to allow the Director of Veterans Affairs to purchase a hundred food cards in the amount of two hundred dollars. Each from local businesses not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for Montcom County veterans who are facing food insecurity during fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Support. It's been moved and supported discussion.
You had to toss his support in there, didn't you? Nobody loves veterans more than me. I was just saying the other day how much I love the veterans.
No other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
All right, thanks, Trevor.
Thank you.
You did pretty good. You're getting better.
Getting better.
Boy, that first time, I didn't know if we were gonna make it. Oh, man, it was scary. All right, warrant reports are up next. I know they're your guys' favorite, I'll get through them as quick as I can. First, warrant report one-one-one-three-two-zero-two-five in the amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents. Next, warrant report one-one-two-zero-two-zero-two-five in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Finally, warrant report one-one-two-four-two-zero-two-five in the amount of five hundred and five thousand, nine, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents for a grand total of two million, two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-three cents. If nobody has any questions.
Thirty-three cents.
Oh, man, well, I'll go with your number, I guess. I'll make a motion to approve and allow for the appropriate signatures, all three warrant reports totaling two million, two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Sorry, check that, I was wrong. Sorry.
Did you get that on record? Is this on tape right now? I wanna, I wanna play that on a loop at my house.
Still checking.
No pun intended, but my money was on Brenda.
Yeah, mine too, that's why I changed that.
Too funny, sorry.
So I'll cross the three out that I crossed over the four.
Your first one.
All right. You got it, Chairman.
All right, it's been moved and supported discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, next up, consent agenda, the items eight through fourteen. Um, just a overview of the county construction ordinance that we amended, repealing the county parks ordinance, blah, blah, blah. If nobody has anything to that, I would move to place those on file.
Or it's been moved and supported to place the consent agenda on file, items eight through fourteen. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Lastly, uh, for your information is Montcom Care Network Board Minutes and the committee that Commissioner Maher abandoned. The Vetri, Veterans Advisory Board Minutes are available. Nobody has anything for that? That will be your board correspondence for Monday, November twenty-fourth.
All right, thank you, Vice Chairman Peterson.
I won't go too far.
Don't go far. Committee report's up next. Number one is the Collective Bargaining Committee from November tenth, Chairman Peterson.
Called meeting order at one-on-one. Myself, Commissioner Johnston and Commissioner Carr were present. There's other people present, public comments were offered, none were given. Motion by Carr, supported by Johnston, enter closed session at one-on-one. Motion by Carr, supported by Johnston, to come out of closed session at two fifty-eight. Public comments were offered, none were given. Motion by Johnston, supported by Carr, to adjourn at two fifty-nine. I respectfully submit these and ask, I move to place them on file. Report.
It's been moved and supported to place the Collective Bargaining Minutes, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, on file. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Chairman Peterson. Up next is new business, item one, clerk correspondence. Item two, controller correspondence.
I'm just gonna mention that once we talk about park rules today, I will be back with hard rental rates. You'll notice in there I, I whited out all the rates, because I didn't wanna focus on that yet, I wanted to focus on the rules, so. Depending on where we land on the rules tonight, that could be the next meeting or one in January.
Yeah.
So start thinking about those.
Set up?
Yep.
Okay, number three is chair board correspondence. Chair doesn't have anything, anyone else on the board correspondence? If not, up next is old business, item one is the park rules. Turn it over to Brenda.
So. You want my paper version?
Yeah, if you would.
Um, so those are our basic park rules that we've been operating on for quite some time. Um, we do amend them occasionally. I think it's been four years since we've done anything um as far as amending or changing anything. Basically, just wanted to start the discussion as to, do you think these are satisfactory? Do you think we need to uh go through them and adjust anything, tweak anything? Just basically wanting some feedback as how you wanna proceed with them.
I think we need to make some adjustments to it. If you look at uh Ford Lincoln Park Rules, Rule Eight, uh quiet hours are from ten PM to seven PM. It means you got three hours to make all the noise you can make.
Yeah, it's supposed to be ten PM to seven AM, yeah, that's what I thought.
Good catch, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, actually, Commissioner Johnson pointed that out to me, and I uh, I got a pretty good laugh about that.
Yeah.
He wanted all the glory.
Well, I would, I didn't hear him piping up. No, I, I think that we probably need to probably look them over, though.
How do you wanna go about doing that?
If you just have them for a couple of weeks.
Bring these back at the next meeting, ready to give the controller changes or the stamp of approval.
Okay.
Brenda, I, I know that originally um Commissioner Maher, I believe, asked to have legal look over um all, the, the whole situation we have going. Is there, has Nate or anybody looked over? You know, do we need an ordinance? Do we need park rules? Will these park rules suffice? I guess.
Nate wouldn't do that, he's our employment lawyer.
Oh, okay, that's the only one I know of.
So I'd have to send it to Mark Nettleton. No, no, we have not had anyone look at these. They were pretty much, I mean, if you looked at the ordinance, I mean, they were pretty much taken from the ordinance, just more simplified, not all that wordy.
Right.
Legalese.
Well, like with the, with the last page, it's, you know, motor vehicles must not be operated no more than fifteen miles per hour on road surfaces. That's flying through McCarthy Park.
Are you talking about the sign one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, that needs to, those need to be changed. There, there's a lot of stuff in there that could be changed. And that's, that, that sign appears at um Crump, Schmid, and McCarthy, not at Ford Lincoln. So we need to purchase three new signs. And like, for instance, Doug wants to change the October thirty-first to just the end of October, so then he can determine what day is the best day for him and his crew to close it that last week. He wants them closed before Halloween. I don't know, he thinks kids are going out on Devil's Night still, but I don't think they do that anymore.
I noticed, too, the, the hours on the sign are different than the hours in the rules. They talk about sunrise, sunset in the rules, and there's actual hours on here, times.
Yep, yep.
And then also um somewhere in there, and I believe it says you guys are done at four PM, right? Um, your workday, and then on the sign, it says eight to five at the bottom.
Mm-hmm, that's what I say.
There's a lot of, you know, man, I talked earlier, there's a lot of discrepancies between all these documents.
Yep.
And um, you know, it definitely needs to be cleaned up. And then I, I also, at some point, whether it's legal or the prosecutor or the sheriff, you know, I, I'd really like to know if rules, if they're enforceable and to what extent, and/or if what we determine needs to be put into new ordinance language and it be an ordinance as well. So all information I think I would like to have before I would be comfortable making any type of decision.
I don't disagree.
Well, we'll have to get to work on them. Um, we start renting the first of March. So we'll have everything in place before then.
We start renting or we open up rental slots?
Reservation.
Right, we don't start, we don't open Ford Lincoln until April or May, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I mean, yeah, I think as long as we have these, you know, set in stone before May first and next year, I think we'll be.
Well, they'll have to be before then, because Michelle has to send those out. Once people have called on Mar- March first to reserve a park, and she's getting them out in the mail or email.
Well, I think realistically, Camp Ford Lincoln, you know, outside of the PMPM, I, I, are we really gonna change a lot there? I feel like we've stayed pretty vigilant on Camp Ford Lincoln rules.
There are no penalties spelled out in these rules, right?
Nope.
So I, I don't think they're, I think they're only really enforceable by trespassing somebody out the property, and then maybe not dealing with them again, but they're not gonna be really enforced by the prosecutor's office or the, this isn't an ordinance, these are just rules. And so, you know, as the caretakers of that property, if we have somebody or notified or, you know, there is a report, if somebody breaking the rules, we can verify it. Now, we can probably trespass, I'm not saying you're not welcome back, but that's about the only thing we could really do.
Ordinance.
Well, if there are an ordinance that spelled out penalties, civil infraction misdemeanors, then the
Yes.
Sheriff's Office could potentially enforce them, yes.
Yes.
Well, that's, so that's my concern or desire would be to collaborate a little bit on, you know, what is palatable for enforcement, quite honestly, from the sheriff.
I don't think public hangings are on the.
No, that's good.
Well, and, and, you know, I see right here it says, no hunting is allowed on county property. I would, I would say we just change that to only county commissioners can hunt. Like, that's part, that's a perk of the job, I would think. But when it's closed, when it's closed, obviously. No, I, I, I only say that because um somebody was on Facebook not, not more than a week ago saying, can we hunt on this? And it was Pepkey Park. And I don't know, is there a sign like this at Pepkey Park, or is it just? Last time I was by there, it was like, if you don't know that's a park, you, you don't, you wouldn't know.
Right.
There's a, there's a sign.
There's a sign, but I don't think it's that sign.
Right. I just didn't, you know, I think we, we talk about all these parks and we kinda look over Pepkey, because I don't know if we've even talked about it, have we? I don't know, it's not. I don't know, it's not, not like it's a huge deal, but. Anyway, I, I think we can, we can just take, take all this under advisement and figure out tweaks we want to make, and Brenda can do Brenda's stuff.
I think we do need to figure out, because Commissioner Johnson, I think you missed last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Where we had rolled back the park ordinance?
Yep.
And I think we were going in the direction of rules other than ordinance, at least that was kind of the vote. And so it sounds like maybe you are more in favor of an ordinance instead of perk rules, or maybe on the state.
I'm in favor of what works best for our citizens and the board, and somewhat still indemnifies us from liability.
The reason we got rid of the ordinance is because we had never used it, so.
Well, and it was also.
And these were what we used.
Right against, there were certain things in the ordinance where if you followed the ordinance, you were in violation of the rules, right? So I think, I think that was our first step to making this more clear and bringing it up to date for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Whenever it will be.
Okay, is everybody good with that?
Yep. Believe it.
All right, old business number two is the Controller's Performance Review, Vice Chairman Peterson.
As if I haven't talked enough today, um, just a quick overview I put on your desk. If you look, it's, uh, basically the same, the same sheet you guys filled out, but it says board summary under the peer review. Um, overall, Brenda did well in fiscal management, four point nine, you know, from the board, uh, transparency and accountability, three point seven, compliance and ethics, four point four, collaboration and communication, three point three. This is all out of five, by the way, it's not out of ten, sorry. Um, problem solving and responsiveness, four, leadership and professionalism, three point six, strategic insight, four point seven. Um, if you look on the second page, just a quick synopsis of the board's overall thoughts. Um, controller's most significant strength overall, the board of commissioners considered Brenda's biggest strength, I forgot a, uh, apostrophe, uh, to be financial management. Um, what the county controller could improve on, suggested controller could be more personable and better at communication. Uh, county controllers' actions positively impacted your department or county as a whole. Board of commissioners did not provide specific examples outside of the fact that the audits have been clean under Brenda's watch. Um, how would the, how would you describe the control's effectiveness in fostering transparency and public trust? The board of commissioners' overall beliefs that Brenda is doing a great job at fostering transparency and public trust in county finances. And on the last page, you'll see two X's marked there, um, a couple of commissioners marked, uh, meets and exceeds expectations. So, um, again, providing an overall rational, rationalization of the rating, assigning a number value to each of the above options, with one being unsatisfactory and five being outstanding. Brenda received a three point six with some commissioners selecting boxes, multiple boxes. Overall, the board's position based on these reviews, Brenda meets slash exceeds expectations. So I do have, um, I do have a copy of this, I don't really care which one, but I, as you see, it says all the districts here. Um, if we can all just sign one copy, and we will place that in, uh, Brenda's file. If that, if, if the wording of the, if, if the wording that I put together fits your guys' thoughts, and if you agree, then that's what will happen. Does anybody have any?
Is there a place on that for the controller to sign it as well? I guess I don't know.
I didn't know if we needed one, I just had to sign this one.
I think typically, the employee would sign it as well.
Full them.
Do you have any? And then I think we've given the employee the opportunity for rebuttal, or do you have any? New feedback? All right, you're circulating that, the.
Do you want to, do you want a motion to place it in the?
Sure.
Controller's file? I would make that motion.
Support. It's been moved and supported to place the job performance valuation of the controller in her personnel file, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. That ends old business. Public comments.
J. L. Greenville. Uh, concerning the park subject, as I see it from my point of view, I think a detailed ordinance that sets the expectations of the people who use the park and also protects the citizens of this county from lawsuits and respects the neighbors is the best policy. I know some of you think just the opposite. Some of you think a short rule set or guideline is enough to protect the citizens. I think both sides need to step back and take a look at the bigger picture. In my opinion, my opinion or your opinion is not enough for a decision as important as this. Should, both sides should be willing to defer to an expert with many years of experience on this topic. The expert would be an attorney with municipal law experience. I believe you have access to one. Excuse me. The question is, are all of you willing to defer your opinion? I'm willing to defer mine. I believe cases like this is some, uh, something is important. Uh, we need to set aside of our opinions on the subject and put the citizens at the top of our list for protection and. Excuse me. It's important to realize you have a fiduciary duty, a responsibility concerning the money you handle and the risk you take. And attorneys of written opinion would be the best guidance for, for us moving forward. Excuse me. Um. You know, we can speculate about this stuff forever and have all different, different opinions, but I think we are called to a much higher standard, and that's the protection of our citizens and the different ways that, uh, we spoke about. And municipal law attorneys, you know, they specialize in this. You know, there's thousands of other municipal governments around here, and they, almost all of them have park ordinance, so there's a reason for it. There's a reason why attorneys specialize in language. Every little word, comment, otherwise, is there specially. And there's a reason for all that. So I would ask that you, and all of us, think at a higher level and defer to an expert to guide you that, what would be the best way to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I would move to adjourn.
Support. I moved and supported to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.